6:30, I'll call the meeting in order. The first item is Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We've got a roll call. Members present, Sandra, myself, and Steve. Members absent, there's Deb and Renee with notice. Welcome.
Thank you.
To your first meeting.
Thank you.
Glad to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Minutes. I have a quondary on the minutes because Sandra's gonna have to abstain. We do have a quorum and theories, we're gonna have a roll of that, too. So I think I'd like to table until Renee's here. Okay. July and Renee can...
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll table those minutes till next meeting. Thank you.
Does someone have an extra pen? I do. You do? I promise I'll get it back. Thank you. Hold me to it.
That's a September meeting, right?
Yes.
Privileges of the floor, agenda items. David, you and the entire audience? Okay, thank you. Communications, any communications? Nothing. Thank you. Administrator's report, principals' report. Doctor Hartwell.
Well, I can start with enrollment. We have a current total of 143, but we have 10 pending registrations, so they've been started and not yet completed. So our numbers look like 153 for the start of the school year, which is up pretty significantly. So that's good. Just to give you a quick rundown of general activities in the school for the summer, our Summer Blast program, that's bringing learning and summer together, that ended last week. We had 20 students attending this year, which was fantastic. In the past, our numbers have been five or six, definitely under 10, so it was excellent that we had 20 this year. Our custodial crew's been working really hard to get ready for day one. You can see how great the floors look and the building looks. They just finished the gym floor. That is a really grueling process, and the weather this summer has made it a little rough, but they persevered, and the school's in great shape for the start of the school year. Our new school nurse is planning to attend the New Hampshire Department of Education Nutrition Department Wellness and Learning Conference in August. That's a two-day event. I think that's a great opportunity for her to make sure she knows, learns about the free and reduced lunch program and all of those requirements. We're doing a new teacher training on August 16th and 17th for our newest team members. I'm in the midst of planning teacher workshop days, which will have a balance of the required refreshers, the new trainings, classroom prep, theme planning, curriculum committee work, and professional collaboration. I will also have a report for you on the New Hampshire State Assessment System and our results. We still have not received the science results, even though the test was taken at the same time as the ELA, the literacy and math, we still don't have science results, which is interesting. We got the other results rapidly, so it's a very different scenario for science. So I hope to have science by September, so I can include those in that report. The parent reports about student results will be going home probably the first week of school or at open house. Sometimes it gives a great kind of quick little exchange between teachers to say, "I'm gonna share this with you now, and we'll talk more about it." So we'll see what the staff decides. Our first day of school is the 27th of August. Cannot wait. It's right around the corner. It's always much more fun in the building when the kids are here. And we will have our open house the following Thursday on September 6th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Our summer project update, the roof is complete. We are awaiting repairs on a railing and a screen that were damaged inadvertently during the process. Our freezer compressor is done. It just needs to be, to have the plumbing reconnected on that. That will happen next week. Our hood vent in the kitchen has been installed. The electrical connections will be done on that before school starts. And Mr. Pocat and I met with a playground design company, a playground equipment company, and talked about designing a phased approach to updating our playground equipment, which is really exciting. So I hope to have some great drawings to show you and some options, so that we can plan accordingly to do that over time and not in a piecemeal way, in a way that has a very significant and clear kind of goal in mind for the playground. And we're finalizing, we're waiting for two more pieces before we finalize our reunification plan, which is part of our emergency operations plan. And I hope by September to have those completed, so that we can lock that into our bigger plan. And that's, that's it. That's what's going on here.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item is the termination of the Hampshire District Implementation Unit ID. Mary, would you like to introduce?
Elaine Dodge, who is our new Director of Student Services, who started July 1 and jumped right in. It's been a full summer already, and she's here to share good news to start us off.
So, good evening. You can see in the attachment number three in your packet that the Ashland School District continues to do very well in regards to the indicators of the state performance plan. That also aligns with the federal requirements. And of particular note of importance is that any student who is initially referred for special ed does have their evaluations completed within the 60-day timeline, so that's important. And also, any student who has been determined in need of services prior to age three has an IEP in place by their third birthday when they're entering school, so that we can ensure services are in place. And just to point out, there's lots of supporting documents behind that. And when you see a zero, think about it in terms of a golf score, that the lower number is the better number. So no worries when you see all of that. So Ashland continues to do very well in their programs.
Mrs. Dodge did indicate to me just before we started that one of the policies, which is up for a second meeting, which is determination of specific learning disability, she does have a note on that, so maybe when we get to that section, if she could just have a moment to share her note.
So 61, 71 got one?
Yes.
Yeah, just the one word, edit.
Anyone else?
No, thank you.
Sure.
Yep.
Got the TV in there?
I know.
Thank you. Summer projects update?
Thank you. Covered that one. Derek Collin.
Hiring update, Mary?
So I'm really pleased to share that we completed hiring this afternoon, and I do have a nomination to bring forward. Certainly, if the board has specific questions, we probably want to go and save that for the end for non-public. As well as, there was one person who was hired just after our June meeting. The board gave me the authority, but we should officially do the nomination this evening for that individual. You have that information in your packet. But I can tell you that I met today with Alyssa Nelson, and she is delightful, and this is for the Title I position, which, if you recall, the manner in which we are moving forward with that is we do have a maternity leave for the first trimester of school, basically. Mrs. Zeeman had her baby, a baby, help me up.
Boy.
Baby boy. Baby boy, healthy baby boy. And so Alyssa would be filling in for the first trimester for that maternity leave. And then after that, for the next two trimesters of school, we would have Mrs. Zeeman as one full-time educator for, through Title I, with health benefits being, which are part of the general operating budget. And then we would have .9 of Ms. Nelson's assistance as well for Title I. Her salary would be paid through Title I. However, health benefits would be paid for through general fund dollars. And certainly, if you have any specific questions and would like to go into non-public, that certainly can be accomplished. So I am bringing forward two nominations, Alyssa Nelson, Title I teacher, and Diana Paul as a primary tier teacher for the one-year position that we have open. And that is the position, she didn't help me up because of Mrs. Lambert's leave of absence this year.
Is there a need, are we to go in non-public? How many leave sales that you need to?
Yeah.
Entertain a motion to approve the hiring. So, Steve?
Second.
Sandra? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you to Shannon and her staff for an amazing amount of hiring and for having done such an exceptional job.
Over a long period of time.
Yes, indeed. Thanks and smart, she was working on it.
Spending in the hiring process.
Yes. And they're still smiling.
Yes.
I have a question. Could you tell me who the new nurse is?
Yes, Susan Ruby, R-U-B-B-E. And she has a background in an emergency room, as well as, most recently, she was a school nurse in the Lakes Region.
Next item is business of board nomination of professional staff, which was what we just did.
Oh, yes, I guess we kind of jumped to that.
Give it a higher update.
Apologies.
And the business of superintendent, general operating expenses, Trish?
We have one manifest that is a combination of two manifests. It's the smaller one for $1,903.07, and manifest 2004 for $133,195.11. There's nothing unusual on these manifests, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
How many manifests are there, Trish?
There's, in the packet, there are three individuals, but there's two packets.
Okay. I was gonna say, I thought around, sorry.
Two, right. The first one is labeled manifest two and three.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Trish? Take a motion to approve. Steve?
Second.
Sandra? All in favor?
Aye.
3-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
On B, permission to hire?
If that's no longer necessary, I was just concerned if we didn't have a Title I.
Absolutely, so we don't need to do B. We should be all hired up. C, end of year encumbrances, Trish?
Maybe I can jump in for a moment. We, you know, typically, you know, it would be done at this point in the meeting, but we are still trying to finalize some numbers, and we want to make sure we're as accurate as possible. So our hope is, if we are able to have a quorum, to possibly do this after the SOU board meeting on the 21st. I think we know of two people who are in attendance, from Ashland, that plan to be in attendance. We are waiting to hear back on, I think, a couple more. So we will kind of continue to monitor that potential for quorum.
What happens if we don't have a quorum?
I think we'd have to look at another time prior to the August 31st. We need to do it by the end of the month.
Oh, you're gonna get down to less than nine days plus posting time and getting everybody together. That gets pretty tight.
I don't know if it would be helpful to just look at, you know, it certainly, I think it would be the only agenda item we would be looking to do, is to encumber the money, if that is something that the board, you know, I don't know if an early morning meeting would be something that would work better for people, and we could have a quorum at, you know, another date. But we definitely don't feel that we're at a point to be able to give an accurate number, and we want to be able to be as accurate as possible. We do know that we have, you know, some fund balance that we need to, you know, want to be, be sure that we're able to give the board accurate information to apply that to decision-making. In addition, in the future, because changes of the accounting laws or standards...
Casby. Government of the county standards, boy.
We would have to, the board would have to make that decision about an encumbrance in June, by the end of June. So this is the last year that it can be done in August. We, you know, certainly, we appreciate that it's difficult to ask more time of the board, but we do want to make sure we have this number as teased out as possible. In addition, what we also probably will look to propose to the board is consideration when a long-term leave was approved for one of our teachers in terms of a maternity leave, that, those are dollars that would come from the general funds substitute lines, so that certainly wasn't something at the time that was anticipated or budgeted. So that may be another encumbrance that, you know, we may want to propose and that the board may want to take action on. So it might, may be easier to try to do potentially, I don't know, just an off-Tuesday meeting, if that's better for people. You know, the 21st is certainly presenting to be somewhat challenging, I think, for the SOU meeting.
Tuesdays, the next, next week I have a meeting, the week after, I may not be around the 21st, I'm one of the ones that, I have family coming, surprised. And then the 28th I have a meeting already, so.
Okay.
That's what I mean, we're gonna run out of time.
Time.
I've already got, the 27th is booked, the 28th is booked, the 29th is booked, the 30th is booked.
Okay.
The 23rd is booked, the 16th is booked. Yeah. The schedule fills up quick, that's what I mean, we're gonna run out of days.
Days.
Offer a solution. I do have a very good feeling of where we are going to end the year and what we have for unobligated fund balance. What I, what I don't have the best feeling on is where some of the quotes of work that wants to be, needs to be accomplished is at. Certainly, the board could have a general understanding of the work that we want it to be completed and could certainly vote up to a certain amount, if you felt comfortable doing that.
I think I would feel more comfortable doing that than trying to get us together later. It's, I don't think it's so much asking us extra time, I think it's a matter of getting us together.
Right.
So that we can actually, and getting that posted, having a legal process ahead of time and getting a meeting all put together. You know, we know Sandra's busy, and Steve has nothing else to do.
Let's run a fire department.
So I'm looking at more.
You could certainly do that, but I would have liked to have had better quotes to come to the board with.
I understand, you know, I just don't like to, you know, some of the quotes, and they're just not coming through, you know. And if they're not coming through, two weeks from now, they may still not be coming through.
Right.
And then we start to hit that wall.
Right.
And I don't want to get to the point where we can't, because we can't get everybody together. We at least have a quorum right now. I would rather pick a number, and then if we don't spend it, then we'll return it later.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
If we can do that.
Certainly, the board has the purview to do that. As long as in the motion that you would specify up to a certain amount for improvements to facilities, whether it's the boiler, cameras, or any of those, be specific. And I have numbers on that, if you want me to address that as well. So we, I'll start with where we are anticipating end of the year. It may vary slightly, but at this point, not including excess revenues or what we had brought forward for retained fund balance, we brought forward $30,000. Voted from the warrant articles was $15,000, so that's 45, and about $37,000 in excess revenue that we won't touch. Unobligated fund balance, we have about $180,000. With regards to what we had budgeted for substitutes, we had reduced that line to The approximate difference between the amount that we need to cover for a long-term sub health benefits before Title I is taken into consideration, that's about $66,000. Which I think that there's money, there will be money in the offset between people that have retired and people who are coming in.
At a lower step.
Yep, at a lower step, and that's about $100, and just under $112,000. So that, if the board so choose, chose, that 66 difference could be covered by that or a portion thereof. With regards to, I just pulled my other notes, I just put away, projects, we had at facilities level talked about replacing the boiler, some electrical work regarding strobes, safety issues with alerting outside people with a flashing light. We talked about cameras and cleaning oil tanks, as well as apparently, we have some chimney repairs that need to happen. So I would feel safe in saying that you could determine funds up to a certain amount for facilities and security, if you felt so inclined.
So what do you think? I mean, we've talked about those, we had some quasi-numbers put into those slots on that spreadsheet.
Yep.
The chimney is something that was not on our facility.
Right. Was not. And we don't have, we're waiting on an updated camera quote, correct?
We have an updated one, we don't have the...
The gym.
The additional quote of the gym until tomorrow, or tomorrow that they're going to come give us that.
So... I would say you could easily encumber $100,000 for facilities and safety if you so wanted, or more.
We have 180 there.
We have 180. We could use it all for facilities in this building, but, you know, do you want to put that, we didn't promise anything for fund balance except the 30,000.
So we have 180, but we need the 60,000, but that could be covered by the 112.
Correct.
So that would still leave you a fund balance there of 52-ish. So I think you like the long-term. Be covered by the lower steps. And then, honestly, I think 100,000 may not be enough. I always think 125,000. Up to 125,000.
There's one piece to this that I, that hasn't been teased out yet either, and I think if we're going to, as a district, look long-term with regards to boiler replacement, we should look at the controls and have automated controls, so that we don't have folks having to come in here at 4 o'clock on a snowy morning wondering if the boiler has shut down. They should be automatically notified. So, you know, even if we did 150, that might be in the best interest of the district long-term. Do we have any figures for any of these items?
That's our challenge is...
Do we have none?
We have very rough.
We have some rough figures.
Very preliminary, and I think the system piece that Ms. Tempur now just discussed, I'm not sure that's been incorporated into some of those quotes.
It has not.
And so, and I think, as she stated, you know, for long-term planning, I think it makes sense to think about that.
We have about 100,000 in our facilities meetings that we have, that is on that paper. That does not include the chimney, which is now defective and has to be replaced.
And we have no idea how much that is.
Was that repaired or replaced? Probably replaced. It's leaking, it's crumbling.
There's an inspection scheduled for the 21st, that would give us more details.
That's what I mean, and then you're gonna have the inspection on 21st, you're not gonna get a quote on that chimney in time. I think realistically, you're probably looking at maybe 10,000, just for that chimney. Plus, the cleaning of the tanks is not just a sludge, but there's also bacteria issue in there as well. And I know Tim has talked about putting on an additional filter system.
Yes.
And I don't believe that's in place yet to allow less junk to get into all of our boilers, but also especially as we're gonna replace out the new, the old boilers, which are 25 to 27 years old. And the goal is to replace the five boilers with three boilers that are more efficient.
The other piece that we haven't talked about as well is the roof, and I have not seen the final bill from that. And we talked about covering that from the expendable trust, but do we encumber some money forward to pay for part of that as well?
So what is our total, 180?
We have 100, about 180,000.
That's available. And how much of the roof?
I believe the roof is about 116.
But we have money in the...
Right.
How much is in that?
Expendable trust.
Is it like 122 or something like that?
It's around there, yeah. I don't know, I haven't been...
There is enough money in the expendable trust that we'll need to cover the roof?
Well, to cover the roof, there's not too much, you know, left over. But are we looking at anything else besides the roof to do from that expendable trust? I'm just kind of trying to put everything together. No? Okay.
What we're gonna be talking about is what she just went over before. Somewhere between 100 and 25, 150,000 is probably where we need to be to accomplish the repairs, the new cameras, the new cameras in the gym, and to start moving forward with controls.
And if we do 150,000, that leaves 30,000.
Yes.
Which is what was presented at the time we were preparing the budget.
So 30,000, we've already talked about, would stay to return. And then we would encumber them up to 150,000, so if we only spend 130, then the other 20,000 would be available next budget cycle to return. But based on, you know, the chimney inspection isn't gonna happen.
Right.
We're not gonna have all the numbers solid. I think, you know, we take the 150,000, encumber that with up to 150,000 on maintenance facilities and cameras and safety. And then we use to accomplish all the goals that we've already talked about. And then if it comes in less, that's great.
And what, what becomes of that money if it comes in less, say 15,000 less? Is that added to the 30, or do just carry it forward?
We carry it forward, and then if we don't need it, we can return it to the next June. I guess it'd be...
It would be June rep versus August. Is that what you explained, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So are we okay going in that direction?
Sure.
And then the maternity leave would be funded through the difference of the existing difference that is in the budget from the change in hires.
Yep, so we're not gonna touch that, it's for the encumbrance, kind of a lot of different step savings to cover that. So I'd make a motion to encumber up to 150,000 for facility maintenance, cameras, and safety.
I'll second that.
Is that what you need, Trish?
I would, I would say 150. We're not gonna go up to, but if we don't use it, we'll bring it forward.
Right.
Okay. That was motion by Glenn and seconded by Sandra.
Yep. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? 3-0.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll do everything I can not to let this happen again.
Sometimes you can't get the, it's busy right now, there are, you know, I'm trying to get windows in my house.
It is no reflection, it is no reflection.
Everybody's just out straight, there are, there's not enough workers out there right now.
Right. People are building.
Well, they're out making money and doing time on quotes. They've got, they've got two months' worth of work.
Right.
You know? So I understand. So the next item would be memorandum of understanding with SOU 48, Mary?
We finally have closure, I believe. So in terms of SOU 48, there were no changes. Maybe I can just speak to both of them at the same time. Pimmy Baker had very minor changes, which I did indicate to the board. So I think we're at a point where the board is comfortable to approve both of these MOUs, and we can certainly have the chair sign off, and then we will bring it to 48 and Pimmy Baker for their signatures. But they did...
But they did move through finally and appreciated their, their efforts.
Everybody get through, we're okay with that. And I'd take a motion to approve the Ashland School District and the SAU forty-eight memorandum of understanding. Should it be with the two entities? Because we have two agreements.
Correct, so.
So SAU forty-eight and.
And.
Penny Baker.
And Penny Baker, yes. If you want to wrap it into one motion, yes.
Okay, and Penny Baker's School District, I'll wrap it into one motion, since it's started off that way. Steve? Second?
I'll follow.
Sandra? Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Three zero. No, it was just my motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business? Any new business? Anything for the board? Okay, policies? We're gonna do the second reading. I don't know, does this carry over?
I'm gonna move.
Is this also a policy?
So that's, yes, so that's basically the motion to approve all of.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, just looks smaller, doesn't it?
What I'm gonna do is, the motion is here, motion to approve, second reading, gonna do of policy forty-one forty, fifty-one thirty-one point one, fifty-one forty, fifty-one forty-nine point two, fifty-one sixty, fifty-one sixty-five, and sixty-one seventy-six, and we're gonna leave out sixty-one seventy point one right now. Okay, as presented. So that motion is just removing sixty-one seventy point one for right now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll deal with that individually. So this is the second reading on all those policies, do I have a motion to approve? Sandra? Second? Steve? All in favor? Three zero. We have a possible change for sixty-one seventy point one.
So trying to.
Yes, the, yep, so the recommendation is the word evaluated and the second sentence is changed to conducted so that it will read, the Ashland School District will ensure that all evaluation requirements for children with learning disabilities are conducted consistent, you know, et cetera.
So, bring that by me again, I just got to the paper. Please.
Can you say it again?
Yeah, so the Ashland School District will ensure that all evaluation requirements for children with learning disabilities are, and instead of evaluated, it should be changed to conducted. So we're going to be basically conducting all of those evaluations in accordance with the state and federal requirements.
So it's gonna say are conducted consistent?
Yes.
That doesn't sound.
No, it doesn't sound right.
Conducted.
Conducted consistent with.
Are.
Makes sense.
Are consistently conducted with.
Are conducted, comma, consistent.
Yeah, so putting a comma in might help, yep.
There you go. Thank you, Mayor. So change evaluated to conducted and add a comma after that. That's not a major change, so we can do that as a second reading with the amendment. So I'll take a motion to approve policy sixty-one seventy point one as amended. Sandra? Second? Steve? All in favor? Three zero. Thank you. Okay, first reading policies. Policy forty-one forty-six, Family and Medical Leave Act. Take a motion to approve. Steve? Second? Sandra?
Yes.
All in favor? Three zero. Policy forty-one forty-six point one, employee leaves of absence. And the next time around, we're gonna have, we're gonna drop the policies or we're gonna carry the fore and go to the other.
And go, you're okay with us moving to.
Yeah, I think so, especially if we're.
Okay, I think that will help us all. Relative to the employee leaves of absence, I'm wondering if I could ask, I did not have a chance with the summer to connect with the ATA again, and I would appreciate a chance just to sit down. It's not a pressing policy, if you'd be comfortable with us tabling that till September, that will give you a chance to, to have conversations.
Yep. So we'll table that policy. And Sandra, did you get a packet of the new, Sandra, did Sandra get a packet of the new policy breakdown?
That, no, we will make sure we do that.
So, so you're aware Sandra, Marilyn went through, and as you look at, like, the one that we just talked about currently says policy forty-one forty-six point one, after it says GCCBD.
Yes.
That will be the new policy code for it. So we align with the New Hampshire State Board Association, which we talked about, and over the summer Marilyn had a fun task of moving all the policies.
What do these initial spans are, or am I?
Doesn't matter.
So there's sections.
Oh, under that.
Under the New Hampshire School Board Association.
So when they issue a new policy.
Yep.
We'll know where it actually goes. If they issue an updated policy, we'll know because it'll refer to the same coding instead of us trying to have to figure out what policy affects us anymore. So they have, there you go, there's the new update, how it breaks down.
Oh, I see.
And, and what they.
Oh, sure.
That's your.
It will make it easier for us to keep the book.
And it also makes it easier for us to see what we're possibly missing.
Sure.
So that's why, and then starting next meeting, we'll just go with those policy letters.
Great, thank you for that.
Well, this must have been a lot of work.
She's still smiling.
Oh, Marilyn did it.
It was a lot of it.
Well, thank you, Marilyn.
Next one is policy five-one-two-seven, admission of homeless students. Take a motion to approve. Sandra? Second? Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Three zero. Thank you. Policy five-one-three-one, conduct. Take a motion to approve, first reading. Steve? Sandra, second? All in favor? Three zero, thank you. Policy five-one-three-one point six, student drug and alcohol policy. Take a motion to approve, first reading. Sandra? And Steve, second? Steve? Yes. All in favor? Three zero. Thank you. Lost my pages. Policy five-one-four-one point two, concussions. Take a motion to approve, first reading. Steve? Sandra, second? All in favor? Three zero. Policy five-one-seventy, proof of presidency. Take a motion to approve. Sandra? Second? Steve? All in favor? Three zero. Thank you. Producers of the floor, number two, David, anything?
I have some names to discuss.
Okay, yeah, we'll grab those afterwards. Thank you. Anything else? If not, we have announcements. Tuesday, August twenty-first, SAU meeting in Meredith, Homestead Building at six P.M. Tuesday, September fourth, Ashland School Board here in the Media Center, policy review at five-thirty, school board meeting at six-thirty. Tuesday, October second, Ashland School Board meeting here in the elementary school at the Media Center again, policy review committee at five-thirty, school board meeting at six-thirty. I don't believe we have anything, there's no doubt in public. Anything else for the board? And anybody else? Take a motion to adjourn. Steve, second? Sandra? All in favor? Aye.
Yeah.